Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our October 21st, 2025 Angels Camp City Council Meeting. Roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Bee Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sharada.
Here.
Mayor Shmenthe.
Here.
Councilmember Brolio.
Here.
And Councilmember Scott.
Is at a conference, LAFCO Conference in San Diego. So, thank you. Would you all please stand and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry.
Item number five, report out of closed session. No action was taken and direction was given to our staff. Item number six, presentations, proclamations, recognitions, Caltrans update on 1H 700 project on Main Street. Steve.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. First item up on the agenda is a presentation from Caltrans. We have representatives, our team, Coleraw and Corey Casey here with us tonight. Gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind taking the podium. And we don't have an email from you yet.
Wait. Oh, very nice to see you.
Is it conference at Angels Camp?
Oh, there it is.
All right. Does it click?
It looks like this. How's that?
Oh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. So, this is our October update for 1H 700. It's a complete street project on Angels Camp, starting from post mile 7.4 to 9.5. So, it's a two-mile stretch, starting from Scream Burner Street all the way to Pine Street. So, first getting into the nitty-gritty of the project, why are we doing it? It's, what is the need? It's to address the non-compliant AD infrastructure and do, for the incomplete biking network, incomplete pedestrian network, traffic calming, pedestrian safety and signage. And the scope of work, we have to, we have reconstruct sidewalks, curb ramps, driveways. By the way, it's on the next slide. Driveways with a landscape buffer, construct new sidewalks, curb ramps, and with landscape buffer, upgrade existing crosswalks, replace road signs, strike bike lanes, secure, and we have secured additional funding for, for complete streets. And one of the things which is not mentioned over here is the drainage system. So, we are, we are installing new drainage system as well. Next slide, please. The complete street will include widening the shoulder near the Breckford High School as well as install street lighting, install new plumbing and irrigation, construct new sidewalk at Utica Park, and we secured additional funding for that. Now, next slide, please. So, this project was awarded to George Reed in back in summer of 2025 for $7 million. And the construction began in August of 2025. We have 200 working days. And the reason I'm mentioning 200 working days because it impacts how we do the project. Now, next slide, please. This is the construction process, progress that we had so far. We did the potholing. It started in August. Excavation was done in September. And during excavation, we found a lot of utility conflicts. And these utility conflicts are with the drainage system. That's why I mentioned drainage system. And a lot of these utility conflicts are with the existing water lines and sewer lines. These are sewer laterals and which can, which are going into your businesses or residential area. These utility conflicts were not, were not discovered during our initial PSNE or PAP process. These conflicts came out when we did our excavation. And as per what we have found, once we did the excavation, we have revised our plans. That's what we are doing right now. We have our red lines. We have revised plans and we are, our engineers are going through solidifying these changes. And next slide, please. So, with the, with the winter coming up and the rains coming up, we need to have a winterization plan. We didn't leave all those, all that city excavated, all of our work excavated. So, that is our winterization plan. We did replace HME. All the curbs have been replaced. Driveways have been repaved and temporary AD curb ramps, temporary AD ramps have been installed. And the reason why you have to do all that patch-up work is, again, for the rain to be in compliance. And now, what is the construction look ahead? Whatsoever, we repaved, our construction will actually resume in spring of 2026, once the rain season pass. And whatsoever, we repaved on, on the side of the street, we will have to dig it up. We have ordered the DI's, we have all those DI's prefabricated and ordered to redo the work. And what we're doing different this time, we are breaking the works into two, two different phases. We are going from Pine Street from the beginning of the post mile to Stanislaus Street. So, one side will be done. And then we are moving to the other side of the road. And then we will move from Stanislaus all the way to Burner Hill. Work will be done on each side of the road, and we have done additional potholing to make sure that we do not encounter drainage conflicts on the other side of the road. And the Caltrans can share pre-look ahead schedule with the city engineer as we go through the construction phase. But here's on, here's a silver lining on this whole side, on, on this project. We have 12 DI conflict, 12 DI's on the side of the road that we dug up, and we have only four DI's on the other side of the road that we need to dig up. So, I, I believe that with this new preparation and what we are doing, we will have much better results. And with that, I can play the simulation, but you guys have already seen the simulation. Don't want to bore you guys again.
Oh, any question answered? That's going to be my last slide.
So, what we're going to do, ladies and gentlemen, is that the council will ask whatever questions they have, and then we'll open it up to the public. And so, we're going to start with Councilman Brolio.
Perfect. How we doing? I do have a couple of questions on, I gotta find them in my notes. You kind of went over the brief explanation of what caused the delay of the project. And then, when are the inlets going to be delivered, or the DI's at this point, I guess? Are those delivered? I've heard November 1st, I've heard a couple of different scenarios or whatever, but do you know when those are scheduled to be delivered?
Before the construction begins. So, that's, we have, construction will begin in March, or whenever, you know, rain season passing, we get green light, we don't know.
Okay.
So, back, at that point, we will have our DI's delivered to us before then.
So, if weather holds and you get these delivered by some miracle or whatever, they get delivered November 13th, can you do construction starting November 14th? Or are you waiting until spring of 2026, no matter what happens at this point?
We will wait until spring of 2026. And if we cannot dig it up, it will be a compliance issue.
Right, okay. So, that's, there is that. What else was there? You answered a couple of those.
With that being said, though, like, you know, as soon as the weather seems like it's changing, right, some, some years towards the end of, you know, February, it seems like the weather's starting to become more favorable, and then we'll move, you know, forward in some years, right, like, I mean, we'll have a really wet March.
Right.
So, it kind of all depends on how the weather cooperates still.
And that's, and that would tell you my next question is, is if you can get this material here, and even if it sits, and during a rainy spot, or if it opens up where you can, and I know, if I remember right, there are certain days towards the end of October, unless you do a whole schweppen, there's rainwater runoff, and there's all this stuff, construction kind of does halt. But if by any chance that you could get that material stocked, ready to go, and we have a really light spring, or maybe we have drought, that you could start work, that would be, as soon as you can kick this off, since we're on a hold now, no matter what we do, till spring of 2026, that's where I, if we can start near, I guess, that Murphy's Grade Road, Demarest, that, that whole state park parking lot, the pizza place, in front of the high school, there's a lot of kids walking around, there's a lot of traffic in there. If we could start in that location, that's just my own two cents on that, and get that button up first, since that is where a lot of the traffic goes. So, thank you.
Mr. Councilman Bee.
A couple of questions. In, in talking to a lot of folks in the city, a lot of people have said, and I think rightfully so, about a lot of the driveways, the temporary driveways, the businesses are maybe a lane and a half, or Riley's, Dog General, the cars can't get side-by-side safely. And so, is there going to be any attempt to widen them, to understand that we have people in and out sometimes at the same time? Or are we unplugging up the parking lots with people trying to back out of the intersection because they can't go through?
So, and that, so we'll have to take a look at this.
We've heard some of those requests already, and we've worked with some of those property owners. And there's one in particular that I know right now, that we went out and met with the business owner, and he has concerns about widening, and we are planning on widening there in the next few days of May, have already been done. So, we can work with the individual businesses and come out, we're happy to come out and talk to them and look at what they have, absolutely, so.
Okay. Appreciate this.
And then one more question is, back when we heard there was going to be a delay, we understood, and I don't know if this is just what we were told, that the current contractor was able to, or willing to pour the DI's in upon site, and it cost about $175,000 more. Would the decision to do that have allowed us to move forward on the project and not delay it until winter and now six months into the spring?
So, that, that's the reason why I mentioned 200 working days, stressed on that. It all depends on, yes, we can pour it, but it's going to take more time. But we will definitely go into a winterization plan if we move forward with cast-in-place DI's. So, that's why we have our prefabricated, it's again, for the, to have more convenience to the business owners and the residents, that once we dig up, we have our DI's ready, we have our pipe ready, and all we're doing over there is installing it and not putting the rebar together and not pouring the concrete.
So, so, pre-passing in place would have caused the ways as well?
Yes.
And so, I wouldn't help. Okay, I appreciate that. I'm happy to hear that you are, you wait until the spring just to make sure you're getting it right, and we don't have to go through this again next year. So, I appreciate you listening to the community and talking to the business owners as well.
Carolyn.
Thank you for clarifying that we have to stop, and then when we can start back up again. My, my concern is always on contractor availability. And so, you're saying maybe if it stops raining in note, or in February, we can start in February, if it rains all through March. I just, you know, this is a big contractor, and they have a lot of jobs to be on, and I want to make sure that when we pull the trigger on this, that, that we have the contractor ready to go.
And we have, I mean, provisions in our contract that allow us to pressure them to start. So, we can start days on them. If we feel like they should be out there working, we can charge them days, and they only have so many days to complete the project before they go into penalties. So, if we feel like they should be working, we're going to pressure them to start working. So, that, that's not a concern for us.
Okay. That's all I have.
And then, my question is, does a 200-day clock start again, or do you take in consideration, so how many, what do we anticipate the length of the project? Because now you guys are going to do both sides simultaneously, it sounds like.
And not simultaneously, one by one.
So, you're going to finish one and then go to the others?
And, yes, and the, and the reason is that we, we don't want to block the pedestrians to walk both ways. So, that's the reason.
When we say 200 days, like, it's not 200, 100 days. It's like, it's 200 working days where the contractor can actually go out and work on what we call the controlling operation, and that's when they get charged a day. So, if it's raining, or, you know, where there's like, maybe, you guys have a parade or something, we tell them they can't work, then those are, those are not working days at all.
You know, I do want to say that I've been working very closely with Troy, and Troy has been very mindful of the project, and when we walked and we talked with business owners and things like that. So, I just wanted to tell you folks that he's done an excellent job, just trying to represent, not only try to keep the job on track, but also understanding the concerns of the, of the citizens. And just as was mentioned, it just feels like the driveways are narrow, but then again, you didn't, it's almost like you didn't put enough asphalt down wide enough to the existing to open those up, to put the berms for the water to run. So, maybe something that you guys could look at. But having the driveways back in for the winter is, is a big plus.
I definitely appreciate, we appreciate that comment. Like, you know, sometimes, you know, we're building projects, sometimes they don't always go to plan, right? We came out and pre-potholed, you know, all of these utilities ahead of time, and we project where they're going to be, but, I mean, we can't, we're not digging down and finding them through their whole, like, you know, all the way, just where do they terminate? We're checking here and checking there and guessing what's in between by where we find. And, and so, you know, when we came out in construction, we found a lot of, of conflicts that we weren't anticipating, because things aren't what we were projecting out. And so, we made adjustments to our plans to accommodate that, and, you know, in the end, like, you know, we're, you know, we're going to deliver a good project if we realize there's inconvenience to this, to the public, you know, through the winter, but, I mean, in the end, it's going to be a great facility that you guys are going to enjoy for years to come, right? So.
So, before probably one of the members of the public asks, let me ask, the decision has been made to leave the delineators up for the winter, is that correct?
Yeah. I don't know the answer to that. I don't see why they have to come, why they have to be there, right? We're at the pavement shoulder, so we can go back and take a look at that with our construction set. But when I drove through and looked at it, I don't see why they need to remain.
You know, and I think, again, working with Troy, the lights have, the lights work, I mean, because you don't have any left-hand turn pockets now, and the way they're staggered. But we hear the most complaints about can't make a left-hand turn into Demarest, and there is a trailer park at the end and an entrance into that shopping center.
Right.
So, you know, if we could help facilitate that, and, you know, that would, that would go a long ways.
Sure.
I'll check with Troy. Thank you, thank you.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
You mentioned the driveways and then the business owners would have, sort of, the business owners have to contact you on the driveway side? Or is it something that, out of the city, we could ask, hey, could you go check those and make sure that we are a two-car, or, you know what I mean, or that they're wide enough to do that? Or is it the business owner that has to respond to you guys?
I think if there's a concern, if you're hearing concerns, like, I think we, our construction staff's done a pretty good job of going door-to-door and talking to the business owners, so I feel like we've addressed that now, and there was a couple isolated locations that we were working on, so I hope that that's behind us now, but if there's a few folks that you need to go talk to, we're happy to talk to them.
Okay. And you asked the other one, and I, and I do look forward to the end of this, like, the, what happened a couple of years ago, that, that looks beautiful, in front of Frog Hollow on the other side of the road, and I do look forward to the end of that. I think it'll be great at the end, it's just, there's a lot of frustration in the town right now. I appreciate it. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. So, with that, we'll open it up to the public if they have any questions from Caltrans?
Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't tell you about this before, but.
Oh, okay.
I had a conversation with Councilmember Scott, who's in a LAFCO conference, and she asked me to ask questions on her behalf.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Two questions, kind of on the same line. So, this is from Councilmember Scott. She also asked about left turn on Demarest, if there's possible some way to do something about opening up that intersection to make it flow a little better, especially if we're going to lock it up through the winter. So, I appreciate you looking into that. She also mentioned right turn on red sign coming from Highway 4, would that be north down towards, down towards downtown? So, when you get to the Stanislaus stoplight, she asked if it would be appropriate.
South.
South. So, when you get to the Stanislaus stoplight, is it possible to put a right turn on red permissible sign up, so that people know that they don't have to wait for that light?
I don't want them voiding, no, and I stood on their counter of cars, I, I don't, but I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, she just asked me to ask those two questions. Thank you.
We can, we can look into that. We can answer right now that we're going to put it up, because we have to run it through our traffic scene.
So, any other questions from the council? Any other questions from the council person? Okay, so we're going to open it up to the public. If you have a comment, please go to the podium and state your name. And please, if the question has been asked, please refrain from asking it again unless you want to have a clarifying point you'd like to make. So, would anybody like to ask Caltrans a question?
Yeah, I.
Go ahead.
I'm Mike Zelke, I live on Stanislaus. I have to disagree with about half of what was said there. The potholing was not successful. I've been in construction a long time, and I know that could have been taken care of. They started the project in August and shut it down in September. It's a disaster. I don't know why we're doing this. The sidewalks are fine, they were in there. A lot of them were just put in, Dollar General included. Second thing is, the driveways, you should be able to drive out there and see it. That shouldn't be the property owner's responsibility, because if they built that driveway wrong, you guys should be out there stopping. So, why do they got to come to you guys to get it fixed? It's horrible. Secondly, is all the delineators. If the project's not going to start till March, can you imagine what fair is going to look like next year? And Mike, I got to disagree with you, the lights are not working. I left the shopping center Thursday, five light changes to turn right on Stanislaus. How far is that? Quarter mile? Five light changes. It takes you 20 minutes. I just pointed this. It's faster to go up to the bypass and come all the way around and go through town and up Goldplin than it is to come through town. It's a mess. I don't understand, and I agree with Scott, if they could have poured them in place, we wouldn't be sitting here dead. The DI's have been poured by now, and there's no reason for it. We're going to wait, how long for these cast-in-place pieces? So, my question is, is how much potholing was really done?
So, potholing, we can do it at spot check, but if at any point from your one DI to another DI, that pipe, you know, the pipe, it intersects with any of it, and we don't know, because potholing is a spot check. It's not, we, we don't know the entire length if there's going to intersect. If it intersects even at one point, your elevation of the DI for the front part changes, your elevation from the second one changes, and it changes the entire scenario. Like, look, we can put a DI, and we can have a different slope on the, but what it's going to do is, it's going to have drainage issues when the rain season comes. So, our job as a Caltrans is to do things the right the first time.
That's funny.
I know, I know. Sometimes I crack myself up as well.
Yeah. So, with that said, I've done a lot of locating in my life, and most people run a song through it and get a locator, and it tells you how deep the pipe is, where it's at, and all the other settings. So, I don't believe that you guys did a thorough job potholing, and if you would have, you'd have found 90% of the problems. Granted, there is things that you don't see. I've done a lot of locating, and I know how to find pipes underground. It's, it's not a rock. Steve, Ray Charles could have found everything up there. Okay, I'm sorry, this is, this is acceptable. And then we went back in and we paved all this, which is great for the winter, then we're tearing it all back out again. And I'll go back to Scott's point, should have spent the 100 grand and had the cast-in-place, port-in-place done and moved forward with the drainage and kept going. We've been sitting dead for what, six weeks? Done nothing?
Again, cast-in-place would take more working days. Our intention is to keep the same working.
In the meantime, though, you inconvenience us. We got to sit and live through this. You don't live through it, we do. If you come down Stanislaus or Markplin, if I'm pulling my RV, I cannot make a right-hand turn. You can't make the corner without tearing those two square, it's two square. You can't, you have to go out in the other lane, which is crossing a double yellow line. I have a commercial driver's license. I could lose my license for crossing a double yellow line and get a ticket. You guys have created a hazard. So, what do we do about the hazards you've created? Because if somebody gets killed, you guys will be responsible for it.
What do you think they're coming into?
You said you're going to talk to safety. Well, obviously, you haven't talked to them yet.
We have talked. All the projects go through the safety process.
I believe what was said, why can't it be put back? Get rid of the delineators, put the lanes back the way they were, the lights go back to the way they were, the problem goes away until March, and then we live with it then.
I think they're going to explore that option.
We're going to explore, but no answers.
Well, we.
You're not, yeah, you're not going to get an answer tonight, right?
Exactly. That's typical. That's bureaucracy. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else?
Looks like we're getting to that point in the day.
My name is Mike Zelke. My issue is, why is the northbound lane through town closed and no turn pocket? From the Catholic church all the way to the high school, from out the village in front of the high school, it's all closed off. They're not going to work on that till sometime next year, even if they were on schedule now. I don't see why they moved all the traffic over and then make a shift change in front of the high school, a lane shift there. I don't understand that. It could be all opened up, where you have a turn pocket all the way through town, the northbound lane could be open, the Stanislaus light could work like it normally does instead of one at a time going. I've seen traffic backed up from the Stanislaus light, like he said, clear past Middleton's, because you can't get through town. It makes no sense. They move you away from the construction on one part and then thumb you back over to it on the other side. Open up the lanes, that's all we're asking, just open the roads so we can, we can get through town. When the schools are going in and out, it's, it's a disaster. It is. I don't know how they get school buses around there. You're forcing traffic up into the residential areas for the people who know how to get around there, and that's not fair to them either. Tearing up the city streets because you put more traffic, more pressure in there, and all you have to do is open the road back up. And it should have never been closed to begin with on the north side, in my opinion. I don't see any purpose in that. Move it over when you move to the other side of the street. It's that simple. Thank you.
And hopefully, you'll get us an answer regarding.
Well, I called my representative, and I didn't get anywhere with that.
Thank you, Cal. We asked Caltrans to come back with answers.
Yeah, well, I think, I think they can get ahold of Steve, and then Steve can, if they communicate with Steve.
And all you have to do is go out there and watch Monday, just stand there one day at 8:00 in the morning and at 3:00 in the afternoon, and you can see what's going on.
So, yes, please state your name.
Veronica, Angels Camp. I do have to agree with what has been said. Obviously, driving through town, as I think everybody here does, I will say that I have seen tempers flare, I have seen people turn on red lights because they're frustrated, which almost created a head-on right in front of me. I have seen people almost hitting each other just out of frustration, going on the road where they're not supposed to be right now. I really truly believe if you guys could put the roads back to at least one side, if not both, back to normal until the construction can start again, you will ease so much. And if you have children, or, you know, your loved one is driving and you witnessed this, it's pretty scary. These are small streets, and people are extremely frustrated. We don't, normally, this is a very considerate town when we're driving. People stop and wave people to walk across or enter traffic. That is no longer happening. People are basically just frustrated and, pardon me, but pissed off. And it's just changed the atmosphere of our driving in our town. Our town is really, like I say, very considerate normally. So, that would be a really great solution.
Appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
So.
My name is Dustin Yvar. I'm owner, operator of Mike's Pizza, right there on the corner of Demarest. Seems like we all kind of have a common concern, streets getting back to kind of, to some sort of normal, which I appreciate we've addressed.
And if you have children or, you know, your loved one is driving and you witnessed this, it's pretty scary. These are small streets, and people are extremely frustrated. We don't normally, normally, this is a very considerate town when we're driving. People stop and wave people to walk across or enter traffic. That is no longer happening. People are basically just frustrated and, pardon me, pissed off. And it's just changed the atmosphere of our driving in our town. Our town is really, like I say, very considerate normally. So that would be a really great solution.
Appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
My name is Dustin Yvar. I'm owner, operator of Mike's Pizza right there on the corner of Demarest. Seems like we all kinda have a common concern. Streets getting back to kinda, to some sort of normal, which I appreciate we've addressed that. But right there on the corner, it was already a dangerous corner, a dangerous street. People, Demarest and Highway 49 is already dangerous as it is. High school kids, cars turning in front of, so this has definitely compounded that and made it much worse. I do have some videos and stuff on my phone of trucks when they leave Save Mart cannot make the turn, like they mentioned.
Can't go.
You cannot, and that lane is so narrow that if the truck is there, you actually can't even come down Demarest. They take up both lanes. So you cannot, the truck can't turn. He's gotta go over the dividers, over the markers, just to make that right turn. And you cannot turn into our street to get into our restaurant. And so you're forced to go into the Save Mart parking lot and come around. And, you know, I have all my numbers. I have a spreadsheet of all our numbers and a, you know, the last two months. If it, if it goes like this, I mean, I'll spare you all the stuff, but if it goes like this, I will lose over $100,000 in sales by the time it's complete. I've done all the math. Up to August, I was up. Since September, October, October alone already, I'm down over $10,000 in sales. And we're, that was from the 17th, so that was in two weeks. You know, so if that adds up, you know, I know this is a million-dollar project, but we're talking about, you know, affecting real people. I have to either cut, cut labor or cut shifts. I have to, you know, it affects people. And so ultimately, just streets, if we could turn left and. And I watched a poor little lady the other day. Because it's, she's, you know, there's been a turning lane there her whole life. That turning lane's not there. I watched her turn into oncoming traffic and sit there waiting for the light because she was gonna turn left into the bank. And there's no turning lane there. It's been there her whole life. She doesn't know. And I, so people are pissed off at her honking at her, and she didn't know what she did wrong.
That's happened several times.
Yeah. And I was, I wanted to get out and yell at the other people because it's not her fault, you know, she was just confused. But anyways, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you a lot.
Hi, Julie Douglas. I agree with what everybody said. I think it's really impacting our city. One thing I didn't notice when this project started, and I still notice. There are no signs on any of the businesses affected saying, "Business still open during construction." I don't know if that's a city thing. I don't know if that's a Caltrans thing. But I do know when I visit other towns and there's major road construction going on and entrances to businesses are either blocked or changed or full of all the cones and everything. There's always signs that say businesses open during constructions. And they look like a Caltrans sign, you know, it's like a white street sign or something. I, it doesn't affect my business, but you can hear how it's affecting other businesses, and I really would like to see that. Especially if our roads are gonna be crazy like this all through the spring. Because it's a shame to hear what's happening to Mike's Pizza. You know, and you've got Dollar General, I mean, everybody on that side of the road. The Golden Frog Vistro, people don't even know if they're open or not. And that's a brand-new business, you know, that's just started, and they're trying to build up their clientele. In fact, they closed, when was that, March 2011 West Fest Day? Because I think that's when the press release came out that there was gonna be work being done overnight and part of the day. So they just took the loss and closed for the whole day because they weren't sure what they were gonna be dealing with. So I think that's something we really need to consider. I don't know who's responsible, if the two, if the two parties need to work together. But we really need to help our businesses out during this time. Thank you.
So Julie, so that you know that Troy and I met with all the business owners on that side of the street and did talk with them about how long it would take to put their driveway back in.
Right.
And, you know, I think everyone appreciated the heads up about that. But, and I didn't, I don't know if I talked with the manager at the Vistro or not, but did explain that, you know, maybe for a half hour, 45 minutes or anything, we're putting the driveway back in, that it would be shut down. But, you know, your suggestion is a valid suggestion.
For sure, for sure. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Basically, was that right? That's my friend. I have got a label. I will say, not, it's not, mm, the whole construction has negatively affected all of the businesses going down. Nobody wants to really drive through that and get to downtown, which negatively affects all of us, just in general. So as soon as we can button all that up.
Thank you.
I just wanna add that I was personally never communicated with.
I don't think, I think when I said that, I don't think we walked into your business.
I've never, and I've had a hell of a time getting ahold of anybody. I've emailed, I've made phone calls, and I've gotten no.
I don't, I don't think we walked into your business, now that you say that.
Yeah. I know, I never.
I forgot.
And so I just.
I have to say, I forgot. We forgot.
I just wanna add that, that's all.
Yeah, because we were, we were talking with, yeah.
I would have had one thing I forgot. It was about two weeks ago. I was in front of Dollar General stuck in the traffic maze. And Angels Fire was trying to get through.
Oh, that's a disaster.
Traffic was backed in both directions, and they were locked and couldn't go anywhere. I'm sorry. If I'm in Iraq and they can't get through this disaster, that's a problem. And it's, they finally drove over the cones, went in the lane, and got around the cars that were there so they could get. But it was backed up. They were stuck. I was trying to find a place to go. There's nowhere to go. Cars everywhere. So.
I think we, I think that you guys have heard the concerns, you know, repeatedly heard the concerns. So hopefully you can address those and help us out during this transition to the next phase when you guys start construction again.
Is there any outlook on a timeframe to address some of these issues?
We just have to talk.
Yeah, give us a few days. We'll go back and take what you guys have back.
I'll show you what I think you guys would be doing there. I spent 47 years in construction, and I've never seen anything like this.
Yeah, it's a mess.
We wanna be done just as bad as you guys want us to be done, right? Our staff is out there. They're being so, alright, guys, throwing things out there. Alright, for fans, it's out there. We want this job done just as bad as you guys.
If you have a comment, we're more than willing to listen to it, but please step up to the podium. Yeah, I don't know if there's any other comments?
Yeah. Troy Zelke, sorry, we didn't come as a crowd. My concern, traffic, everything, I agree with everything. But I'm also very concerned about our kids from the elementary school walking. They're trying to walk as far as the Capello Apartments. Some go to Gardner Lane. They don't, can hardly get across the highway. They're not really sure where, the road comes down there by Froggy's, and the crosswalk just ends. It just falls off. You couldn't even ride your scooter off of it. It's just a dead drop. And then they go on to the new blacktop, which, you know, where is the traffic lane? Where is the lane for them to walk? Nothing's clear. I mean, kids, kids are out there, and they're walking everywhere, and there's nothing clear for them. So I'd also like to talk about the kid, um, traffic.
Okay. Anyone else?
Call me.
Hearing none. Anyone online?
Questions online?
Pardon?
No questions.
No questions online? Thank you, gentlemen. And hopefully you've heard our concerns.
Hey.
You do have one, then.
Oh, I do have one. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I do have a request that you, you do, as you said after the first couple people talked, that you go ahead and quit the lanes back to the way they were and give us a center turn lane back throughout the town. That would help quite a bit. Our timeframe to drop our kids off at school is down from, on a normal day, 10 minutes to 15 to 20 minutes at best, and sometimes up to 30. So if you go look and say, hey, are the lights working? They work in the middle of the day when there's just people passing through, but not whenever the schools open or close. And then I guess a question would be, if we failed in utilities, and that was contracted to a third party, is there a penalty for that contract? Will that save money for us in the long run?
Casey, was there a question? Was that, was, is there a penalty? You holding anyone accountable for the pot holing and not finding what you thought was there? No. Okay. The answer, the answer is no, from Caltrans. Thank you. Michelle, anyone else?
No.
Okay, good. Thank you, gentlemen. And hopefully we'll all get a prompt response, and we can mitigate some of those concerns as we move forward until the spring. Thank you, guys. Okay, we're moving on to item seven, approval of the agenda as posted or amended. Any changes to the agenda, Steve?
No, thank you.
Any changes, counsel? Any public changes to the hearing none? Is there a motion to approve?
Just a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Any discussion from those present? If not, Michelle?
Eho.
Aye.
Sharona.
Aye.
Chavente.
Aye.
Prolio.
Moving on to item eight, public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest that otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. Would anybody like to address the council during public session? Please state your name. Thank you.
Julie Douglas, Practical Chips Company, Downtown Angels. Earlier this week, I sent a letter out to all the city councils, city administrators, some city staff regarding the conditional use permit that had been passed by the planning commission on October 9th for the Geneva School, which is going into the previous Casca Bell restaurant location. And we had several of our business owners downtown sign the letter. And basically, we were just responding to the reasons why the, the planning commission passed it. I don't think I need to go into that whole letter thing here. Everybody's got it, right? So I just wanna, I wanna read a statement. Gretel is out of state, and she asked me to read a statement on her behalf. So I will do that.
Time out. I'm just getting a time out.
Yeah, if this is concerning the, the appeal, that will need to wait until the public hearing is held for the appeal. If that, if, if that's what this is concerning.
This is just public comment. She wants me to read this letter.
As long as it's not about the annual review file. In which case, you can read it at the public hearing when we have.
So we can't talk about any of that tonight?
Wait, okay, so wait, time out. Let's go to, here we go.
So you would be able to comment tonight on it, but if you want it as part of the appeal, it's going to also need to be read during that public hearing if it's considered at that time.
Sure, okay, and I'm okay with that. So she wrote a letter. She wanted me to read this to members of Angels Camp City Council. "I've been trying to make Angels Camp Historic Downtown vibrant since 2016. When I purchased a dilapidated building of every model, I have spent thousands of dollars," that would be Migos. "I have spent thousands of dollars in this town trying to make it something people want to come and enjoy. I have run two businesses for almost eight years, and it has not been easy. Swimming upstream with property owners who won't rent spaces, parking issues, COVID, to just name a few. We have absolutely no signage driving tourists to this area, and when they do find us, buildings sit empty and sidewalks are filthy. I am a firm believer that business creates business. A charter high school and church office space does not help that belief. The Casca Bell space should be another restaurant or retail space bringing locals and visitors to this area and creating tax revenue. The alley to be used for dropping off, picking up students during a high-traffic time is only wide enough for one car and has blind spots. There is also zero outdoor space for the kids of this school to utilize for breaks. This is completely inadequate, and I'm surprised planning approved this concept. There are far better places in this town for the school to locate. Downtown is not the right fit. Thank you, Gretel. Just for me, owner of Pickle Patch Cafe Cafe. And Migos on me." And then my own comments. I just wanna look to the city council for this, speaking as a business owner. We have a lot of cards stacked against us right now downtown as business owners. We already have traffic issues, parking issues, lots of building vacancies. We, we are, I mean, we've said this to the council before, but we're constantly getting people that come in. They've never been here before. They come in, and they don't see a lot happening. The few of us that are open, they come and visit us or whatever, but they don't feel the value of returning to our town. They've made comments, well, we'll just go to Murphy's next time, or we'll just go to Sutter Creek or Sonora or whatever, because there just isn't a lot to draw them there and to bring them back. It's also hard getting locals to come downtown. And so some of our businesses, the majority of our income comes from tourists, and some of us, the majority of our income comes from locals. But it's never a matched amount, and it's, it's really hard with all of the cards that we have stacked against us. So we are looking to the city for guidance, and not just this, but other issues we have that we hope to bring to you in the future. And we just, you know, we're just asking for consideration on this, which is something that you can think of, okay? I'm gonna let the rest of them speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. My name is Erin Montoya. I'm the owner of the salon. I am not really good at just, like, talking off tough, so I just, I wrote something. I was gonna read out loud to you. "We're here because we love this town. We're committed to keeping it a historic main street and keeping it thriving. Downtown Angels Camp is just where, it's not just where we work, it's also where we build community. We create jobs, we welcome visitors, and keep our local economy going. The proposal to convert the former Casca Bell's restaurant into a private church school may sound harmless on paper, but in reality, it changes the heart of what downtown is meant to be. This space is designed and zoned for public-facing commercial use, replacing it with a private, non-commercial institution that is one of the few restaurants or storefronts that brings daily foot traffic and visitors spending. We're not opposed to the church or its mission. We respect what they do. We simply are asking that this type of use be placed outside the core business district. Or won't it affect the local tourism or waffle energy that makes these streets so special? We all want Angels Camp to succeed. Preserving the strong mix of retail, dining, and tourism-based businesses is essential to what is, was to be essential to make it successful. We ask that you help protect the economic and cultural vitality of downtown by denying the cost, the conditional use of the permit or by encouraging relocation to a more appropriate area." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Wait, something different. Well, you heard me say it. Ms. Patricia Harpkins. What I wanna know is if those frog line events, the brass ones, and I've talked about before, if we can work with Caltrans, so when they put in the new sidewalks, these get put in at the same time. Is there a process that I need to ask the council to do to kind of get that looked into? To find the funds, if there'll need to be funds there?
You're talking about the winners from the frog junk, correct?
Right, the frog plaques.
The frog plaques, and I think you can talk with Steve. We have two order, I'm not supposed to talk, so please talk, talk with Steve. There is a plan.
There is a plan now? Okay, because I hadn't heard anything. I just wanna make sure this is gonna save the city money, right? Hopefully.
I'd be happy to talk with you.
Okay. Thank you. That was, that's just been on my mind.
Any other comments?
One more thing, and totally random, but I brought up a, something that's been bothering me. When the bypass went in, what, I don't know, 20 years ago, I'm gonna be stretching that. I feel like it was 20 years ago.
2008.
That was close. That's still, I'm close, because I graduated in 2007. Okay, so I remember that they were, we were promised at the, when they put the, or passed in, they were gonna put signs saying, "Historic Downtown Angels Camp. Visit, like, eat, dine, shop, whatever." So we would draw people to still further go downtown. And then I, I might be wrong, but also near Glory Hole, we were supposed to have those, and we never got those. I know maybe you guys are all right people to ask that, but it's just something that I wanted to bring to you tonight. It'd be awesome if we can get those, because a lot of people don't even know that downtown is even a thing. I live in Murphy's personally, and I'll talk to people, they're, we didn't know there was a Historic Downtown Angels. And I'm like, yeah. So anyways, I, I remember those were supposed to go in. They never went in, and yeah. Thank you.
Another Steve. Any other comments? Okay.
Oh. My name's Nate Young. And I 100% like to agree with what she just said. It's kinda wild that we have this amazing downtown, so much history here, we've got a great museum. And there's no sign that says, "Take a right." That's my big point.
Thanks, Nate.
Steve, can you look into, through here? Oh, they're in. Okay, okay. Any other?
We have them.
Oh, let's come there.
Are those the brown ones? Would those be ones, same one of the dirt, same color of the dirt, those would be ones? Ones that don't say downtown, ones that say museum, that's not downtown, those are the ones? Gotcha.
Okay. Just confirm. I have no idea where those are at.
There's, I'm, I'm, okay. Same color of the dirt.
Any other public comment, anybody online?
No questions.
So thank you for your comments and and we appreciate it then. Moving on to item nine, consent items, there are three items, item A, approved draft minutes of October seventh, 2025, item B, approved corrected minutes of July first, 2025, originally approved on July fifteenth, 2025, and item C, AP checks and treasure reports from September 2025. Does the council, any items that they'd like to pull? The public have, has, would you like to pull any of those consent items? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, a second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion, any discussion from the public? Hearing none, Michelle?
Yes, Bee Hill.
Aye.
Sharada.
Aye.
Chavente.
Aye.
Pro Leo.
Aye.
Item 10, restarting action items, item A, resolution 25-84, accept the Purdy Road water and sewer improvement project as complete, authorize a release of retention and authorize a contract completion notice to be filed county of Calaveras County, Dave Richards.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, we are here to report on behalf of city staff the completion of the Purdy Road water and sewer improvement project, and we're asking for acceptance, approval by the council of acceptance project, authorize release of the retention and authorize a contract completion notice to be filed with the, with the county. Couple things that we'd like to mention as we, as we conclude on this project, the Purdy Road sewer, what prompted this project is we've had a number, multiple number of times of overflow, sewer overflows in along Purdy Road, caused by root infestation and joint displacement. We did extensive CCTV work to identify the areas that were specifically problematic and replaced those sections of sewer as part of this project. Some of the sewer segments that came out were more than 75% clogged.
Wow.
So there's a reason why the water was bad, the sewer was bad, overflowing, and those have now been replaced. We also replaced any of the sewer that was in proximity to the creek, in that area, again, to avoid infiltration and inflow problems in that. We added 600 feet of new water line down Purdy Road, increasing the delivery pressure in that area and adding a fire hydrant to improve the fire protection in in that part of the, in that part of the community in that. And in the process of doing all that, we rebuilt the road in, along Purdy Road in that. In terms of the project financials, the project was awarded to Nick Garridge and Sons at a, at a bid of 324,475. We had one construction change order on that project and it was a deductive change order. Actually, we were able to decrease the final price. We worked with the staff to trade, if you will, a water line impertinence that we figured out a way that we really didn't need that for some additional paving work that was done out there to create a little bit of a turnaround, if you will, as part of a detour that had been set up for the project so that people like me who have gone down that road and realized I needed, I came with the wrong way and I need to turn around, I can actually turn around without having to go into somebody's private property and the like and that, so we were able to do that. The improvements met all the project specifications, met all the city requirements, and we finished a month early.
Wow.
So we're very pleased about how that, how that project turned out and we're asking for final approval so that we can, as I say, release the retention and file a notice of conclusion with the county.
So Dave, you put in new water lines, but what, we didn't talk about it, so we didn't do any of the automatic meter readers because we weren't tying into those?
No, we did, actually we did, we had two new, we had two water surfaces, we had one new water service and one old water service that we replaced, and in both cases, we ended up with the automatic meter readers, Dave, I'll probably put in as part of that project. So two more, we've got, I don't know, 1,800 or whatever to go, but we nailed two more.
Good, thank you.
No, that is awesome, maybe you show Caltrans how it's done.
Under budget and less time than you thought, I know, it's amazing.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
I have to be very, very, very careful, because remember, we're going into a foreign corruption permit, it sounds like, you know, I feel for you boys, I'm not saying anything.
Any other comments from the council?
I'd just like to echo, I really appreciate the diligence, the enthusiasm of the staff to get, you know, overpromised, underpromised, overdelivered, I like it, and so, well done.
Thank you.
Newrich has done us, both projects, they've done a great job, appreciate their work.
Yeah, and I want to echo that too, I mean, I'm happy these CIP projects, like Booster Way was done, I think, a week or so early, and that one was right on budget, if I remember right, and Purdy, and Mark Twain up there, then we've knocked out a lot of projects over the last year, so, and all within budget, I mean, then some minor hiccups in there, but congratulations and hats off to everybody.
Part of it, part of it is we, we sort of have a philosophy that it's, it's okay to make a mistake, but it's not okay to repeat the mistake. And so we've, you know, we've learned a lot, working here in your community, working for you, and each project, we, we think we get a little bit better at avoiding, avoiding the issues and that. Now, I've got to tell you, I've got to tell you that, listening to tonight, and I don't know how this all is gonna work out, but we need to take a real hard look at our, how we're gonna communicate on the Alacito Road, we hear you, we absolutely hear you, that, you know, the.
And especially since this is even more now delayed, it's really gonna push into this, having this road have massive construction on it as well, I feel like it's gonna send people over the edge.
If they don't reopen.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know if we can flip, I don't know.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying is, number one, we, we plan on coming back to you, working with Michelle and Steve, really coming back to you with a communication plan, you know, how are we gonna let people know that we've got what's happening here, and then taking a hard look at how we stage that project, although, you know, it may, it may require some changes in, in the contract a little bit, but, you know, this, you know, we, we just can't, we can't ignore that we have this issue on Main Street, knowing that part, you know, we do have to, you know, redo or close trap or close lanes during construction on Alacito, due to the sewer project.
When was that kicking off again?
What was that?
When is, when are you kicking that off again, what month?
November.
November, yeah.
So that's, that's part of it, part of it is, we need some, we just need to take control a little bit more, anyway.
Thank you, Dave, so is there a motion to approve resolution?
So moved.
A second.
I am, I am, has been a motion? I am, I am, because you guys are so good, I did that on purpose and both of you guys caught that, that was very good.
Trying to keep you alive.
Okay, so before the motion, is any public comment regarding this completion and this resolution?
Nope, just, good work, thank you very much.
Thank you, now, is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
And a second.
And a second.
Okay, so do we, do we have to, what do we do?
He's coming.
Thirty second break.
Okay, good, all right, has been a motion and a second, any other, any other comments? Any other comments from the public? Anybody online, Michelle?
No comments.
Hearing none, roll call.
Bee Hill.
Aye.
Sharada.
Aye.
Chavente.
Aye.
Pro Leo.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item 10G, thank you, Dave, and thanks again for everything that you do. Resolution 25-85, rewarding the contract to CSG to prepare the California Environmental Quality Act, environmental document for the city of Angels, draft greenhouse gas reduction plan and authorizing the city administrator to sign all related documents and approve change orders not to exceed the total contract amount of $45,000. Amy?
Yeah, council members, this is sort of the last step in this process that has been going on for four, going on five years now, we've been to you several times and this is just to do the exciting part of the project, which is the environmental review document. Most people care what the actual plan says, but in this case, it's just the environmental review document. We did receive three proposals that ranged in price from 32,300 to 99,176, and city planner, city engineer ranked them and recommended that you hire CSG because they have both secret expertise and expertise in greenhouse gas reduction plans, which is not terribly common, so we happy to answer any questions that you might have.
This funding is coming from COGS, correct?
Coming from COGS.
So it's not a general fund allocation?
It is not a general fund allocation, nor was it for the draft greenhouse gas reduction plan.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah. I understand the need for this, you know, we, we're gonna be asking the state for money for grants, it sounds like this is necessary to do that. My, my comment, I guess, would be that we create a plan that has, really focuses on the least fiscal burden to developers, if that's, how much leeway do we have in here in this plan to devise something that we can get passed with the least amount of problems?
The plan has already been proposed and prepared, so I'm happy to go over it with you, I'll be honest with you, a lot of what's in there is only stuff that we have control over ourselves, and some of it pertains to what the city does and how the city operates and its fleet operates and the types of cars it would ultimately use many years down the line.
It's more internal.
And our primary reason for doing this was for larger developments, because it is very costly for them to have to do such a plan themselves, and it delays their project. This gives them a standard that they can use without having to go and recreate the wheel every time, so that's really the primary purpose we did this for, was for large developments. Smaller ones don't usually, this doesn't even usually kick in for small developments.
I was thinking of the other developments, just one more layer of bureaucracy, one more layer of expense, I'm wondering if it's, if I talk to a developer, if they say, no, we have our own plans, it kind of wasn't like we put them in, or, and, and, and once this is in, and we have our plan, what if somehow the regulations get relaxed, can we go back, how flexible is this plan, can we go back and change it so that we're not charging more or forcing more than what's minimum required?
We can always go back and change it, just as we can always go back and change our general plan, you're not locked into it so much as it gives you a standard so that if you want to proceed quickly, you've got one as you can, as opposed to having to start from scratch.
Because there's already things changing, is that what you're talking about, there's already?
Already in our plan, already revise our plan because of the state law regulating reach requirements for residential.
Right.
So we're already gonna have to change that.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the public, go ahead, sir.
Give an example of this greenhouse project in effect, give it an everyday example that we would understand, got it? That's what I want to know, give an example.
It would be taking some of the city's fuel powered trucks that they got in forth with, and perhaps considering electrical vehicles for some of them.
Okay, I can see that, okay, that's what I want to hear, I want to hear these examples, not, I'm listening to what you're saying and I'm looking at there and I'm trying to figure out, what are you talking about? I understand what you're talking about, like certain cities do change from like electric vehicles, hydrogen gas, whatever they use in vehicles, a lot of things like that, but that's what I want to hear.
If we were to partner with Habitat for Humanity on some of their rehabs they do for older buildings, we would talk to them and they would work with us in terms of increasing insulation to decrease heating costs, things like that.
Okay, those are the examples that I like to hear, that people want to know, instead of just.
If I remember right, even, because this was brought to the COGS, right? Right, I mean, it had to do with, it brought in like airplane, it brought in buses, that, that, the car, the Calaveras Transit is now gonna buy electric buses and things to, things to approve and you're bringing that number down of your greenhouse gas over time, whether it's traffic, insulation, all those different things.
Good, that's.
And FYI, we have been fighting fairly hard to get the state to recognize that controlling vegetation on your parcel to reduce wildfires reduces emissions, and getting them to recognize that as part of this plan, so we're still fighting that fight.
With fireworks, you told me.
Thank you. There was a mandate that we developed a plan to take into consideration, there was a threshold, they did a measurement, and they benchmarked how much like greenhouse gases that we were emitting, and then we had to work on a plan to slowly lower that number.
Yeah, I know, they had done like that all season throughout.
But you know, with some of it, you know, they, they've already talked about relaxing some of those, and so as, as Scott was sharing, you know, this is, this plan's gotta move and be, because we may have to adjust it if regulations change, you know, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir, thank you.
I think most be approved.
Has been a motion?
I have one, one more comment.
Sorry, I jumped in.
No problem, I'm reviewing the contract, on the time of performance right now, it says this should be continued for a period of three years, even though the, there's a 14 week time delivery on this thing, and so I'd like to change that to, to continue until June 30th, so it doesn't affect any other fiscal year. And then number three, under compensation, it actually does say that the consultant, the paid consultant should be no more than 32,300, and it says, in no event shall the compensation exceed 32,300 per fiscal year without additional written authorization, so I'd like to eliminate the per fiscal year and make this a, like a nine month contract or whatever through June 30th, so that all that 32,300 is this year and there's no, and it will not exceed that, but the way the contract reads is like a free year deal, where it can get 32,300 every year, as I was two and three.
Yeah, we did use the standard contract and unless the city attorney checks, and I believe you did some checking on that, Steve.
It seems like it's probably, yeah, a template contract, but I think, I think that needs to be adjusted to fit this contract.
We did not, we were afraid the city attorney.
Oh, I'm always late to get it for you. I don't see a problem with that, I say the way I read it was that if there was something requiring additional work and you do have up to the 45,000 from COGS, is my understanding, that you could then, it's not 32 or 33 every, every year, it's just that the total amount would not exceed the 45 budgeted amount, that's how I read it, but if you want clarifying language, we're happy to add a little bit more clarifying language in there.
Yeah, and the compensation doesn't talk about the 45,000 and does say without additional written authorization, all right, from the city, that's city matter.
City administrator per.
We put that in the resolution, we did not want to commit to 45 in the contract.
Right, okay, now I get that.
But for three years, yes, we will work with the city attorney.
Because that is only a 14 week project, right? It's what the timeline shows if I read it right.
It's six to nine months max.
Okay.
Compensation, do you have another, any other point that you want to address?
The three years, just the term.
No, just term, yeah, that's the only thing that the contract is odd to me, however it works, but I didn't want to imply that you could get 32,300 for more than one fiscal year.
Excuse me, Mike, was this actually, did anyone open this up for public comment officially?
I thought he did when that gentleman.
Made his comment.
Okay, but I thought we were supposed to go to the podium.
Do you have a comment?
I do. Veronica Matilde, Angels Camp, I just wanted, I was listening to this and I'm glad that you asked for examples, examples of possibly changing any kind of vehicles over to electric grade in the future, but at this time, does Angels Camp, the city of, have any kind of charging?
It's built into this plan.
It would be built in?
It's built into the plan and it gives us a long leeway time to deal with this, if we need to.
If we need to, because if this, if we're talking, you know, a grant for an electric vehicle that sits there and then the city has to come up with a boatload of money in order to put in a charging station, one or multiple, then I don't give a hoot about an electric truck, so I'd like to put it on record that, you know, and I, I think this council has a good head on its shoulders across the board in regards to that, but, you know, let's not look at it like one of their flyers.
Yes, it's, the plan is on, I think it's probably on COGS website, and our website, I would highly recommend reading it, there's.
And our website, I would highly recommend reading it. There's some things in there that I just, I don't, I don't love this, a lot of this plan. And when, and Scott and I sit on COG and we brought a lot to the consultant regarding our vehicles, regarding the charging, all of that, and just how to implement that in such a small city. And we don't have the funding to put in all of the infrastructure, so.
Right.
There's, and also things are changing from administrations down, things change. And so, yeah, anyway, it would just, there's a lot, there's a lot of...
Moving parts.
Moving parts in leeway.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's... Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure that, you know.
And unfortunately...
The public understands that, you know, it's like, oh, this looks great, but on the back end, you know, guess what?
And unfortunately, no one wants to do that, but it's almost an exercise in brutality too. We have to have a plan in place.
Right.
And, and the county realized that, you know, through COG and its helping the city develop a plan, you know, how to, how to make that plan come to fruition is another story.
And how to be competitive with brands.
And how to be, yeah.
Excuse me. You guys are saying COG, and I don't know if everybody...
Council of Governments.
I know, I know.
I was just about to ask.
Yeah, Council of Governments.
And you know, when I first got on the city council, I asked for a cheat sheet. So the public out here, they don't know acronyms. I don't, I remember them. But it's a pain in the patootie, so if everyone could start actually using
You bet.
the name of organizations, so everybody out here can understand who you're talking about and what exactly they do. I mean, you say city of governments, but it's like, okay, well, what does that do?
Yeah, the COG is an entity that combines a county and the city for dealing with our road system. It can be highway four, it can, and it goes through the county and the city. We work together to allocate funds back and forth, and it's, they drive a lot of the road, the road projects.
And they've been instrumental in securing funds to upgrade the city in a number of ways. So it's a very beneficial, the Council of Governments is a very beneficial organization. Campbell, I lost track. Do we, do we have a motion for this resolution?
I will make a motion.
There's a motion?
No, second, pending amendments.
And a second, pending the amendments? Any other discussion from council? Hearing none, any discussion from the public? There's one online.
No comments.
Hearing done, roll call.
Bee Hill.
Aye.
Chirato.
Aye.
Shmenthe.
Aye.
Pro Leo.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item C, ordinance 549. Reintroduce, waive the second reading by substitution of title, hold a public hearing, and consider adopting an ordinance to address appointments to and vacancies on the planning commission. So what will happen, because this is a public hearing, is that we'll hear a staff report. City council members will ask questions, and once they have passed all their questions, I'll open up the public hearing for you folks to ask any questions regarding this matter. Amy.
Mayor, city council, as you know, this is the second reading, so we could be adopting it. This is basically, it says that for the planning commission, if somebody's term expires, for example, after three years, we need to reappoint somebody to fill that position. What do we do between the point where their term expires and filling the position? That's all this is. This says that that person whose term expired can continue to serve until we finally get somebody appointed to their position. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Scott?
Is there, can we put in verbiage that, that says the city must be diligent in their search for a commissioner? So we don't have someone sitting there as a lame duck for two years?
We could do some further changes to the ordinance. Would you like us, we could proceed with adopting this and then come back to you with some additional changes?
My only concern is we can get some kind of good old boy network, and, you know, Bobby can stay on there because we'll replace him.
So what's, talk to us about the process, so everyone understands the process. So I'm, I'm on planning, and my term is coming up. What are the steps that you guys do?
So first thing we do is we put out a public notice that basically says, hey, we've got a vacancy. We let the person whose term is expiring, we ask them if they want to reapply. We run notice twice in the newspaper. We post it downtown in at least three places, letting people know that there's an opening. And then we ask for applications. You guys receive the applications on the city council, decide who you want to interview, which is usually everybody who applies. And then you hold interviews, and you make a selection after interviewing each person.
So are there changes to this ordinance? Because the, that process has become problematic, or was it like a one-off?
This actually occurred recently.
Yes.
And so we passed a resolution saying that we would adopt this ordinance with this wording. So we're basically following through, is what we're doing here. For it to be transparent, we wanted it to be in the code. In terms of diligence and stuff like that, we probably want to define diligence, maybe. I defer to the city attorney.
Yeah, so the one thing about ordinance code is on the second reading, when you go to adopt it, if you're going to make any changes, you have to bring that back for another first reading. So as is obviously suggested, we can adopt it here, provide further direction, that staff would then look at maybe some other changes like the definition, diligence, that sort of thing.
Does our current ordinance state that upon a vacancy, the city must do this within a certain timeframe? Or the policy or the procedure you just outlined, is there something that triggers that in the ordinance?
The vacancy.
And that's in the ordinance?
That's in the ordinance.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
It was just, it was just a unique situation that we faced. And so this, this covers that situation if it ever occurs again.
Yes, because what we did in fact was we skipped a meeting, being not 100% sure that we could count everybody's vote. And we, we don't want to hold up people's projects because of that.
Any other comments from council?
No.
This public, go ahead, sir, but you have to step in.
I will.
Thank you.
I should say, I'm sure.
And please state your name.
My name is Anthony Guzman. So my question to that then, since that commissioner, since the term is over, and it will be an intern at that point, right, until somebody, you bring somebody else on. So what responsibilities will that intern still have if he chooses to say, I'll have the intern do it still? Same responsibility, same, can approve same, the same things, like he never, basically like they never left?
Yes.
Correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, because if things come up, who's responsible, who does it fall on? Okay, that's, you made it clear on that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other comments during the public hearing from anyone here? Please state your name.
My name's Lauren. This is like a silly question. At this point, you guys should know that I'm a little silly. You had mentioned about communication, and you posted it in the newspaper in, in downtown, or in local businesses, not necessarily downtown, but local businesses.
Post office.
Post office, okay. Is that our normal form of communication for just about like any type of public notice? Is it the newspaper? Kind of sort of say?
Post office.
Post office.
Website.
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 Facebook.
Facebook.
It is on Facebook, okay. Because I feel sometimes I'm a little out of the loop, and I'm not exactly sure how to get the public information. Thank you. Oh, no.
Anyone else?
Yeah, why didn't I get a point?
Before I close public hearing, anyone from online?
Sorry, that was just a joke.
No questions.
Yeah, there's no comments, then we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for a motion.
Make the motion.
There's been a motion?
No second.
And a second? Any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion from the public? Anyone online, Michelle? There are, but no comments.
No comments.
Roll call, please.
Bee Hill.
Aye.
Chirato.
Aye.
Shmenthe.
Aye.
Pro Leo.
Aye.
Moving on to item 10D, agreement, approve an agreement between the city of Angels and CSG for certain on-call as-needed services. Steve.
Thank you, mayor, and council members before you this evening as a request to approve an agreement between the city of Angels and CSG, which I don't know what it stands for, that's their company name, CSG. I tried to look it up and find, is that an acronym, or is that what? That is the company name, CSG, for certain on-call services as needed. So here, called in approximately December of 2024, the city hired a full-time employee to serve some fire code needs, some general code enforcement, and some building code needs. That was a full-time employee that works 40 hours a week. Prior to that, we relied on this same company, which is CSG, to provide interim and on-call services. Before we had this full-time employee, we would generally get code enforcement one day a week on Friday. He would come in and this company would assign somebody to come into Angels Camp, review all of the complaints that had been received the week prior to that, and then start working on those complaints for that one day a week. The same thing with building code. All of the plan checks that need to be reviewed for new businesses coming into town, we basically got one day of service out of that. So the city decided to hire a full-time employee that would be a little more consistent and regular and available to the community. The intent was always, when we hired that employee, that we would retain this agreement with CSG in case our employee gets overloaded and needs some help. In case our employee needs some time off, we have a backup plan that we can still rely and continue to provide those services to the community. That agreement that we had in place with CSG expired June 30th of this year and was not renewed. And I believe that was just an oversight. So when I started in September, I was advised that we no longer officially have an agreement with CSG, and that's why it's being brought before you today, because it was always the intent to maintain this agreement. The budget that you adopted for this fiscal year includes about $50,000 for these services, and it's as needed. It's not like we give them $50,000 and they draw down from it. It's as we need them to come in and either provide auxiliary services for Michael, who is our billing and code official. The amount of time that they spend in the city is the amount of time we bill, they bill us, and it draws down that $50,000. It could be that we don't spend any of that money because we don't need it. This is kind of an insurance plan to make sure that if something happens to our employee, or he gets overloaded, we can draw on these additional services. So as I stated, the money is already approved within your adopted budget. We're not asking for any additional funds. We're just asking to renew the agreement that expired in June. There is one change to this agreement as compared to the last agreement. It gives the, this is a three-year agreement with the option to renew for one-year terms after the initial three-year period. Your former agreement that expired in June of this year did not have that provision. So this new one will allow us to continue the agreement as long as we both agree, we being the city and CSG, so that this one contract for services can continue. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
The automatic renewal, will that also then trigger the $50,000? Or can we then set that at a lower rate based on what we perceive the year will be?
Yeah, we can budget during the normal budgeting process, whatever number you want to budget. This agreement just allows us to spend up to 50, but not exceed 50,000. So we can spend $0 in the year, we don't need their services.
Any other comments from the council? Hearing done, any comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Anthony Guzman, so my question on this, since it's up for renewal, and it'll be, if you approve this, it'll be up for renewal again in three years. So is this being renewed, is, is this being looked at like any employee? How are they doing? Did any of these, what he's supposed to be doing, helping, did it, the backlog, if there was, did it come down? How much did it come down? Was it worth the money? Are we getting at, that we're getting from this? That's what I want to know.
So we instituted a couple of years ago, this council decided to evaluate all of our consultants. And so, and CSG would be one of our consultants, that we would get a report, we would ask questions, and make determination whether or not we want to continue the contract, just like we do with our planning and our city engineers and, and those folks. So on an annual basis, the council puts their head together and discusses whether or not they want to continue that contract based on the amount of work that was performed and was performed to our satisfaction.
Good.
We've also asked for different building inspectors when we felt like that person didn't really understand our community, or work with our community in a certain way. We've asked for them to send a different.
Excellent.
Yeah, so we have had that, we've had that conversation.
That's what I wanted to hear. I'm sure that's what everybody else would like to hear.
And, and it goes without saying, you know, based on community response and what we heard, the council decided to move forward and hire our own building inspector and code enforcement. And if you've met Michael Clark, Michael Clark is truly an asset to our city.
Excellent.
He's doing an excellent job. He's all about customer service. He's familiar with our city. He used to work at the county as an inspector, and Michael's is doing a bang-up job. And so what we're doing is, as Steve has said, is just have, we got that little bit of insurance policy with this, with this firm.
Good. Thank you. That's the one here.
Yeah, one more comment real quick, just to address the question. Regarding the, the renewal, it is not an automatic renewal. So the language says that upon mutual written agreement of the parties, which means after the initial three-year term, we have to put in writing and they have to put in writing that we both want to continue this arrangement. And if either one doesn't, then it terminates. And I do want to echo, in the short time that I've been here, Michael Clark has been outstanding. Our code enforcement cases have reduced because we get more than one day per week service. Our responsiveness to the community in terms of reviewing building plans, the chief can probably talk about his service to the fire department. It has all been improved with Michael being here, so I want to thank him publicly for that.
Excellent.
Any other public comment? Hearing no public comment. Is there a motion to approve this agreement?
I will make a motion to approve this agreement.
And a motion?
I'll say it.
And a second, any other discussion from council? Any other questions from those present? Michelle, anybody online? Any questions from those online?
No questions online.
Hearing done, roll call.
Bee Hill.
Aye.
Chirato.
Aye.
Shmenthe.
Aye.
Pro Leo.
Aye.
Moving on to item 9E, resolution 25-83, approve in a side letter agreement to include out-of-class pay for the exempt employee group. Steve.
Good, thank you, mayor and council members.
Can I say something real quick before that? Thank you guys all for coming. I mean, this is awesome when everybody shows up, so I, it's a little tenuous moment, but it was, it's, it's really wonderful seeing people out there.
Come back.
Thank you.
But you know what? It's always good to have people who are passionate. That's something.
Well, you've been here a few times now.
I know. I love your energy.
I've heard a lot of that, guys. I am.
Thank you.
It's always good to see you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you're good.
All right, my last item for this evening is a request to approve a side letter agreement to include out-of-class pay for the exempt employee group. We have a very small but mighty exempt employee group that is made up of management staff. So my request is for you to consider what termed out-of-class pay, which means if one employee in that group, since it's such a small group with management responsibilities, if one of those employees is not available because they are out on an extended leave, they resign from their position, they're terminated, they're just not available for whatever reason, we need to have those duties covered. And typically what happens is another management employee, in addition to their duties, would take on this role. As an example, when our city administrator resigned, we had our police chief continue to be the police chief, but also serve as the city administrator for a short period of time until I arrived. It's that type of situation where an employee, as a management employee, is responsible not only for their own duties, but for somebody else's duties, there's no mechanism in place to compensate them for those extra duties. This would allow for that, for that temporary time of service. So we worked with the exempt group, we ran the side letter agreement through our city attorney's office. Both sides have agreed to the language therein, and essentially it would provide for a 5% increase of their base salary for the period of time that they are serving in both roles, either at the direction of the city manager or at the direction of the city council in the absence of a city manager. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
I have no questions. I just, we run on a pretty short staff a lot of the time, so just there's a lot of roles that are filled and different hats that get worn all the time, and I hope this helps compensate that. And thank you to all the employees that do step up and, and go from an A game to an A-plus game all the time. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And it acknowledges on our behalf, and it's a thank you to those staff members who are stepping up and filling more than one role in one more than one capacity. But we do appreciate all the hard work. Any other comments? Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Anybody online with a comment? Michelle?
No comment.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I'll say it.
Thank you.
All right, you have it. Tell me yours.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Any discussion from the public? Anyone online?
No comment online.
Roll call.
Eheh.
Aye.
Sharato.
Aye.
Shemente.
Aye.
And Foleo.
Aye.
Moving on to item 11, informational items. Steve, any informational items?
No.
Hearing none, we'll move it on to item 12, administration report.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have just a couple of items. One, just a reminder, I met with the interim general manager of the Utica system, Dave Andres, very recently. And so this is just a reminder of the planned and scheduled Utica maintenance period that will start November 2nd and continued for the duration of the month of November. So this is an annual thing that happens every year where the Utica water system essentially takes this time during that month. And specifically during that month, because we're usually out of the fire season. It's before the rain season typically. So they choose this month on purpose to do maintenance on our water system that we share between Angels and Union up in Murphy's and Balacito area. So just a reminder to the public that this is going to happen. It happens every year. There's nothing to worry about. We have water reserves. We do ask, if possible, to just be mindful and maybe conserve a little bit during this month, some of the water. So that's one thing. Next is presentations. If you recall, we had Firewise presentation during my first city council meeting two weeks ago. We had Caltrans during this meeting. At your next council meeting, I have the, of course, let me write it down. It's the economic development, the Motherload Training Center of Economic Development. Exactly, the Motherload Job Training will be at your next city council meeting just to provide you an update on economic development efforts in the region and how we can partner together to specifically enhance the economic development efforts here in Angels Camp. Your meeting after that, which is your second meeting in November, I contacted Martin Huberty from the Angels Camp.
CDD.
Convention and Visitors Bureau, right? No.
Calaveras Visitors.
Calaveras Visitors Bureau.
CVB.
CVB.
Good luck. Another acronym, there you go.
CVB, Calaveras Visitors Bureau. I've invited him to come at your second meeting in November just to give an update. I think this was council member Sharato's suggestion. So he's agreed to do that. He'll be here at that second meeting in November just to give you an update on what's been going on in the CVB and be available to answer any questions you have. So I don't have anything planned in terms of presentations for December.
I do.
And so this is me asking, do you want any other presentations for December or January?
I'll just, I do, but I'll do it during my council members' briefcase. I'll just hold on.
Next is employee appreciation lunch. I want to thank Michelle for kind of spearheading this. We have a tradition in the city to typically on roughly a quarterly basis to just get together as a small staff. I think we have around 30 to 35 employees in the whole city. Everything from the fire chief of the city to the police chief, to the city manager, to the brand newest person in the city. So it's a very small staff. We try to get together about once a quarter just to let them know that we appreciate their service to the city. The next lunch will be on November 5th, and the city council is invited to that. It will be here in this building.
Yay.
Yay.
So thank you, Michelle, for prompting that to happen again. The ACBA mixer at Grace Hills will be on November 22nd, which I don't, that's not on your calendar, so I just wanted to.
What day is that again?
November 22nd at the Grace Hills Church.
It's right over here.
Oh, Tuesday, Thursday, Thursday and Friday. So Thursday and Friday of this week, I will be available by email and phone because I have to attend a mandatory RMA, which is Risk Management Association. It's our insurance pool. I have to attend a mandatory RMA meeting both on Thursday and Friday in Fresno. So I'll be out of the office, but available by phone and email to you. And final announcement is our chief plant officer, Caleb Mason, has accepted a position at another jurisdiction, and his last day of work was today. So we are officially, as of 5:00 this evening, without a chief plant officer, which means chief plant officer is the person that's, holds the license and is responsible for our water system here. He has a superintendent, which is his boss. And fortunately, his superintendent, which is Chris O'Flynn, has those licenses and can step into that role temporarily. Apparently, it's a very hard position to fill because there are a lot of requirements associated with it. So happy for him, but sad for us that he's moving on to another agency. So in the interim, until we fill that position, your public works superintendent, Chris O'Flynn, will be doing double duty, both as the superintendent and as the chief plant officer.
But we're going to start flying tomorrow, correct?
We're going to fly starting tomorrow. We needed to wait for the position to be vacant, which became vacant at 5:00 this evening. And we'll fly that position tomorrow.
Do we have a, like a mutual aid with other agencies in case we need a coverage, he has to go out or something?
Not for the chief plant officer position. It's mostly things like, you have to have somebody on record that has these certain requirements to fill that role of you operator's water system. It's also reporting requirements that that position is available for. So that might be something I can look into. Are there other chief plant officers in?
Like with CCWD or UPUD? Or is somebody, TUD, is somebody where we could say, oh my gosh, we're in Pickles, do you have somebody that we could look at?
And that is the end of my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll start with council reports.
Sure. First, I want to take this time to thank Michelle. All your hard work during these very trying times, passing that resolution retroactive was a no-brainer.
Thank you.
But thank you, you're not unnoticed. You're quiet.
Appreciate that.
Let's see, I attended the LAFCO meeting, and we actually, we had a couple of annexations, it was kind of fun. One was annexing, a guy wanted, a couple wanted to build a single-family house, and they wanted to get annexed into a CSA so they could get road serving, road sewer services and everything. And so we did that.
Community Service Agency, okay.
Sorry. So yeah, so now that they're part of the neighborhood, they're going to be paying their share, but they can get access to that stuff. And the second was annexation of a sphere of influence, or to a sphere of influence. In Jenny Lynn, they had the sewer kind of go from point A to point B, a roundabout way. And then in the middle, there was never, they weren't part of the system.
There's no tie?
So it was really bizarre. And it affected Jenny Lynn School, who wants to go to hook up the sewer system as opposed to the septic. And so all the people between that space are now in that sphere of influence. So CCWD can provide water and sewer if the residents want to do that. We're not forcing them to abandon wells or send in tanks. It's just an option. So that was interesting. And Kara Scott is, the, LAFCO's have their annual retreat or whatever it went, I can't remember the name. Conference in San Diego. And Kara's down, and they're representing us with a couple of other people to learn more about what LAFCO does. We have some annexations anticipated for Angels Camp, so it's going to get interesting.
Did you explain LAFCO?
It's Local Agency Formation Commission.
He's good. Yeah, basically, LAFCO's are involved in development, making sure that special districts, cities, counties are all doing their job the way they're supposed to do it and handles annexations and spheres of influence and all that kind of stuff. It's trying to protect agriculture.
Yeah, which is, yeah.
It's a tough, you know, line. You're encouraging development, but you're also trying to protect those spaces agriculture. So it's an interesting organization. And that's it for me.
Caroline?
I really don't have a whole lot. I haven't had any meetings. Thank you for going to my meeting, whoever went last week.
Oh, you were.
And our upcoming Utica meeting is going to have to be moved into the first week of November. I don't know what date yet because I'm going to be out of town that week in Orlando for work. And I want to, like, yes, you've been amazing. Thank you so much for all that you've done. And I, I hope you can get some rest soon.
Yeah. Thank you.
We did report out of COG.
I thought we did.
I thought we did. If you want acronyms, go to COG, like local area transportation funding and RSTIP and regional transportation, federal, there's all sorts of, yeah.
And some of us, some of us, you know, we do committee assignments. And then some of us are alternates. And the two of us attended the COG meeting. Alvin's been on it before.
He's the actual alternate. You're like the alternate.
The alternate, the alternate. And I'm sitting here, and it actually drives me crazy because it's like a different language.
Yeah, there's federal, there's state funding. There is, COG is a lot, the council government, there's a lot of moving parts there. And either way, the chair does a wonderful job. I didn't have a whole lot of the one on. I did meet, Michael Minkler asked to sit down with me and talk for a few minutes, so I did meet with him last week on Thursday. And just about keeping open communication was the gist of it with all of the water agencies throughout the city, or throughout the county. So and then we got Utica, which is our water agency that transport, gets the water from high up in the Sierras all the way down. That's coming up next week, or maybe we're postponing it.
We're moving into the first week of November.
Okay, so we are. We're going to move that to the next week in November. That's all I got.
Okay, so I attended Calaveras Public Power Authority, CPPPA. And they had a very positive audit. And one of the things, this is, when Maloney's was put in back in '62, when the federal government authorized Maloney's, both Twalomee County and Calaveras County became first preference participants. And so they get an allocation of power that can be used for all public agencies. Which, and I'm only sharing that because one of the things that was shared by our general manager was that Angels Camp saved five, almost $500,000. The power that we receive is at such a cheaper rate that if we were purchasing it from PG&E, our PG&E bill would be $500,000 higher. And when you think about it, and we were living with this, with the JPA, and we don't think about it, but imagine Michelle coming up with half a million dollars more for this budget, and where would that come from? And what would our city look like? So it has been in existence since probably 1988, and it has benefited all the public agencies, the county government. And it's just, it's just a blessing for both Twalomee and Calaveras County. There was some talk about changing the JPA amendments. They're going to put that on hold. And we, our power's being generated, but PG&E transports our power, or transmits our power. And it was a little wonky the way PG&E did that. And so they're hoping that there won't be a January true-up any longer. And they're trying to convince PG&E to go to a formula. Years ago, they used to use a formula to generate how much it would cost the organization to transport our electricity. So hopefully PG&E will go back, back to that. But one of the things that I do want to share is that we talked a lot about with Firewise, and I would love for us to do a community choice aggregation, maybe in December. We talked a little bit about how Firewise is saving folks money. The community choice aggregation is the ability for a third party to come in, purchase electricity, and on a volunteer basis, sell it back to the community if they so choose to sign up. But it's hard to believe, but there is cost savings. And I know Twalomee County was looking at it. There are a number of organizations in cities that are taking advantage of this community choice aggregation. And it may just be one more thing to help soften the financial blow of PG&E's rates keep going up. So I'd like to see us have a presentation on that. And Michelle, I echo, and you know I echo, all your hard work. And one of the things that I know that your staff has been struggling with is the transition to the new billing. And, and I know that you're feeling a lot of phone calls. And hopefully, the tide has turned and we're almost through that. But again, you know, what, not only what you're doing on a personal level to help us through this transition, but also what your staff is doing with this new billing is really appreciated.
Thank you. We'll have a normal billing go out next week. They're back on schedule.
And I know it's been hard for some folks. But you know, at your suggestion, you know, no late fees, no turning off. We're going to work with them to create a payment plan. So we're trying to do everything we can as we, as we do this transition. So again, I want to thank you and your staff.
Thank you for all your support.
That you're doing.
Thank you.
So I think that's all. Oh, I also attended the grand opening of Habitat for Humanity. And I had an opportunity to meet Kelly and Greg. Kelly is Betty's.
Niece.
Niece.
A weeder.
Yeah. And what a wonderful lady, and had a wonderful conversation with her. And hopefully, the start of the trading post, Betty is allowing to leave Habitat to lease. Maybe it will open the door for some of the other buildings downtown.
That'd be great.
So that was very encouraging, and it was a wonderful event. Okay, that's all.
Is that what they're working on when they're going to be doing? Habitat building?
Well, that's their new office.
Their new office.
They moved from, they were down.
By Habitat, down far out of town.
Far out of town, and they just outgrew that space.
Oh, okay. I wonder why they, I saw the whole grand opening.
Yeah, and they, they're actually starting to take applications for the homes, which is exciting for us. So, okay, that does council reports. Any correspondence, Steve?
Does it have to be a family to get one of those homes though?
No, I don't think so. You have to be a certain income. Go talk with them.
You have to be a certain income, I don't qualify.
Well, I'm the same. No, no, it's based on your income.
Yeah, go talk to them.
Go talk with them.
It's the office?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trading post.
Right across the bridge.
Any other, any correspondence?
Don't throw away.
No correspondence calendar?
Yes. And I'll make the changes, and I'll work with Steve to see if we have any additional changes and update the calendar. But since UWPA, the Utica meeting will be moved, we'll look at that for the first week of November. But we'll add the employee recognition. Everybody's invited. That will be Wednesday, November 5th. We do have a council meeting the night before, on the 4th, and then on the 18th. Planning commission is set for the 13th. And our normal meetings for LAFCO, COG-TAC, IRW, I think that one now is staff.
Don't ask me those.
Yeah, that's the watershed.
It's the watershed, yeah. Chris O'Flynn goes to that. Chris O'Flynn goes to that. Don't ask me what IRW is.
And Amy has been attending it, I heard before.
Yeah, exactly.
And do you want to keep this on the calendar? Or would you prefer to have that?
I don't know. I mean, COG-TAC is also all at, it's administration. It's not as.
Yeah.
On the 5th is the ribbon cutting for the wagon trail. It's at 11.
Okay.
And we all, yeah.
Highway 4. Highway 4.
Do you know where they're at?
It's at Prospect 772.
So at that intersection?
Where do you mean by new highway 4?
No, I.
This street not to copper Angels Camp.
This is section 8.
Flyers are coming. It's, my center's going to save the date. They don't have time. So I emailed them, and we just got back to you today that it was.
Oh, well, they've been doing all that?
And I believe it's at Prospect. I don't know if they're going to ribbon cut it down and then have a little thing.
They got all the fun, they took all the fun out of it.
Empty dews.
Yeah, I love the wooden dews.
Any other, anything else for calendar? Future agenda items. Scott?
No.
Caroline?
We are, have been asked to do a full JPA meeting for Utica Water and Power Authority. And there's a list of like six items that we need to pick two that we would want to talk about there. And I don't know if we need to agendize it or if we want to just be casual and figure out what we want to do like with those two items, so.
So it's the PDV of the city and UWPA. Everybody in the same room.
Everybody in the same room. Yep, we have all our GMs. And we talk about, so we just need to figure out what items we want to talk about. So I don't know if we need to agendize them. Go ahead.
I can ask a question about that. Is that, is your understanding, is it the manager's responsibility to coordinate and pick a date or?
Yes, but it's the council's decision on what items we wanted to take, move forward.
I see. I thought we were moving forward. I thought Utica was bringing forward the items to talk about.
Remember we.
Well, I know that UPUD, no, we were supposed to bring it back to our respective boards. Yeah.
So during the meeting I attended for Alvin,